Your face, especially when they're wearing sunglasses.
When I'm in the, when I'm in Publix, because nobody recognized me and I can get, I can get in and out. Yeah, I like it.
Are these to be read at? Too close to. Okay. Okay. What to do and what not to do, yeah.
I think she said, uh, the penthouse. Couple people aren't coming, yeah.
Mike, how many regular members are there?
Five.
I was coming, we got five. Oh, okay, okay, I see.
Um, we do have one extra paper. Do you want that one?
Water.
Well, you don't have to print it. So anytime you want to print any more, that's what I'm gonna do. Yeah, it's a lot of papers.
I've got seven o'clock, should we begin? All right. This is the November sixteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. Call the meeting to order, and can we have a roll call?
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Here.
Mrs. Servopoulos?
Here.
Ms. Vehill? Mr. Kulianos?
Here.
Mr. Vesey? Mr. Andrew Otis?
Here.
All right. So we're, we're good with the quorum. So, uh, that brings us to item two, the approval of minutes from October nineteenth, twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Uh, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Approved.
Mr. Kulianos?
Yes, approved.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, item number three, the quasi judicial announcement and swearing of speakers, please.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the planning and zoning board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening?
I, I do have a question on the one, the, the, uh, the rezoning related to Anclode Isles. I do reside in that neighborhood. Do, do I need to recuse for that item?
How many homes are in that neighborhood or the surrounding area?
Nineteen.
Nineteen? And do you stand to benefit either financially or, uh, in some way from the approval or denial of the application either way?
I don't really see how, it's really just house cleaning kind of thing.
Okay, then no, I mean, we, we've been through this before, so no, but it's on the record at least now, so.
Okay.
But no, I don't deem that as to be a conflict of interest underneath the voting conflicts. Anyone else wishing to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications? Anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn.
Right, that brings us to item number four, application number eighteen dash one-two-eight, site plan modification for Juniper Development LLC to modify a site layout for a medical and general office building that we previously approved under Site Plan Resolution twenty twenty oh eight. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Pat McMeese, Principal Planner. And I would like to, if I could, insert just a brief, uh, protocol for the meeting tonight. Obviously, you know you must wear a mask, uh, in City Hall. You may take the mask off to speak, uh, but please keep the mask on when moving around. Speakers will be using the table there, so, uh, you would walk up to the table from the back of the auditorium. Since there aren't very many people here, I think your seating is fine. Just know that ten, uh, sorry, six feet is three seats. If you're trying to social distance, uh, or if you're in groups, that's fine too. Restrooms, obviously, on the first floor of City Hall. Please confine your movements to the auditorium and the restrooms, uh, and going in and out of City Hall. Thank you for that. And our first item is application eighteen one twenty-eight. This is coming back before you, um, as a, a site plan modification. This is actually a minor modification to the site plan, but at the request of the Board of Commissioners, this is coming back, uh, through the entire process. This is a site plan for a medical office that was approved by the Board of Commissioners in May. And, uh, one of the conditions of approval, uh, was that the applicant provide documentation that the site plan permanent impacts to wetlands, uh, match that of the approved permit from the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The applicant subsequently, um, revised the site, had to slightly revise the site plan to bring those wetland impacts into conformance with the permit. The permit was issued for a previous design of the Shops at Miras, so this was a newer design. Basically, the plan, the shift in the plan is, um, about a five-foot shift to the east of the entire area of fill and, and of the drainage pond. So the differences you'll see will be the driveway cut to Miras Boulevard is now twenty-five feet wide rather than thirty feet wide, that's, that's probably the biggest difference. And the stormwater pond is shifted to the east. It doesn't really affect anything else, all of the driveway width, the dumpster location, everything is fine with that. Uh, the TRC did review this on October first and was satisfied with, uh, with the change. We did add one, uh, can, additional condition to, uh, this new resolution, just ensuring that the site, when the site plan comes in, that the driveway is properly marked and controlled according to whatever Pinellas County approves, whether that's a right-in, uh, right-out, sorry, a right-out only, or whether a left turn can be made out of the site there. And I think that is it. We do have the applicant here, if, if, um, you would like to hear an applicant, uh, presentation. Oh, um, just one matter of housekeeping on this one. We are, we will be asking the board, uh, when this goes forward, to repeal the existing resolution and adopt the new resolution, that's kind of legally how we have to handle it. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Pat, can you just show us what was approved in, back, what was it, May? And then what's being changed now? Because I'm looking, I, I quite don't understand it on, on the, these site plans. Can you show us up on the screen?
The original plan, the original plan, uh, page to that first. I can do without missing this up. Okay. On the original plan, you had a driveway here going onto mirrors of thirty feet in width. Here's the stormwater pond. Just for reference, as far as site, there's the dumpster. On the new plan, you have a twenty-five-foot driveway on the south side going to mirrors. Same stormwater pond. The dumpster's a little closer to the pond, but the shift doesn't affect the layout of the parking or the driveways or any of that. And a twenty-four-foot, uh, wide driveway is sufficient by our code. Obviously, the applicant will need approval from Pinellas County for that drive, for that, uh, connection.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I'm just curious, what, what was the reason for the change?
The, um, the original wetland permit, which is in your pa, was in your packet, was issued for zero point nine-nine acres of permanent wetland impacts, so those wetlands would be filled. Those have been mitigated, the mitigation has been completed and is currently being monitored. The development for which that permit was pulled never went forward, I believe it was called Shops at Miras as well, and, and our applicant can confirm that. The, um, design of the development changed a bit. And, um, when this was approved in May, it turned out that the, um, area of fill was slightly over that point nine-nine, I think it was one point oh-two or oh-three, something like that. And so, we kind of pointed that out to the applicant and asked, you know, that that be documented, whether the permit could be updated to include that little bit more impact or whether the site had to be slightly modified to match the permit. The applicant chose to, was able to basically modify the site with no impacts to the layout, really.
Any further questions for staff? All right, uh, would the applicant care to comment?
Yes, sir, uh, good evening, J.D. Alsa Park, Sycamore Engineering, eighty-three seventy West Hillsborough Avenue, Suite two oh five, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-one-five, and I already sworn, as mentioned by the staff report, that's really de minimis, it changed from previously approved site plan. And most likely, as you notice, and, and, uh, you know, it clarified that its only strip of a green area on the west side had been eliminated mostly. So it's really minor change, but to be sure, we came back and with the process, to be sure this is approved and blessed by everybody. So I want to bring to your attention kindly, that's approval, which is the same as before to this construction plan, is, consists of two phases. Phase one, which is the clearance to the site, and of course, removal, uh, the mug and clay from the wetland area, and later add the fill for that and stabilize the fill. That's the first one, which will be after the, which will be after the approval from the B O C C. The second phase will be later on, when, of course, uh, get approval to the construction plan and, uh, do the site work and construction to the building. So that which is shown clearly in the set of plan, you see as phase one and phase two. Nothing to add, except if you have any other question.
Anyone have a question for the applicant?
I, I do, uh, Michael Kuskudis. I, I guess your intent is for Class A medical office space?
Well, it's, it's, what we looking like now, it will be an office, probably general office, medical office. That's that, you know, the, the direction toward that for right now.
Okay, because this, this town needs some Class A medical office space, so I, I, you know, appreciate it, thank you. I didn't have a question, just a comment. Thank you.
Any other questions?
We have to rescind the prior.
Is.
Point we're going to call for, members of the public, if there's no more questions for the applicant.
Yes, it's, uh, time for members of the public, do we have anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing none, I guess, do, do we have any, uh, email or mail, uh, comments related to the project?
There is one, uh, email that was received. Oh, I'm sorry, wrong project, no, we don't have any. Excuse that.
Okay, so then, to answer your question, you would, uh, either move to approve application eighteen dash one twenty-eight, which repeals Resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight and approves Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-eight. I can, I can form the motion for you, so are, are you looking to approve the application?
I make, I make a motion to approve eighteen dash one twenty-eight and repeal Resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight and approve the site plan for Juniper Development LLC to construct a medical office.
And I'll second it.
With the, with the conditions listed in the?
With the conditions as cited.
Can we have a roll call?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kuskudis, that was a second to that one.
Was.
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes, approved.
Mr. Kulianos?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to application twenty dash one twenty, site plan approval for a retail building of thirty-four hundred and sixty square feet, located at nine fourteen South Pinellas Avenue in the T-five A transect district of the special area plan. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Yes, this is the, um, proposed Pincha Penny, uh, alternate nineteen. This site, um, some of you may be familiar with, this was, uh, a previously occupied site at nine fourteen South Pinellas. It's located, um, in the T-five. T-five A transect of the special area plan. And, um, this is actually right across the street from the one we just talked about. So it fronts on South Pinellas and the side street there is Apricot Court. So that's, uh, right there, um, across from Manatee Plaza and just south of the Ace Hardware.
Is that the old gas station?
I believe it was, yeah, I think it may have been a gas station, it was also a real retail shop there as well. I believe it burnt down and was demolished. So the site itself is actually, um, a, a, a lot of it is asphalt, uh, on the site. And the applicant is proposing a thirty-four hundred and sixty square foot retail building with parking. This is the site layout, basically, it, uh, has the building up near South Pinellas, and that would be the primary frontage of the site. And that is the form, kind of the form that's called for by your transect code. The, uh, automobile entrance would be off Apricot Court. So, uh, that shows where that is with the parking behind. There is also pedestrian, uh, access from South Pinellas Avenue. And really, you've got the store area, and then, as those of you with a pool know, they need an area to store their, um, tanks for their chlorine and those types of things, that would be down in this area. This isn't a flood zone, uh, so, uh, it is a bit, uh, challenging as far as some, uh, the elevation. So we'll show you those elevations in a minute, but that's what, well, there they are. That's what the, um, steps in the front and the ramp in the back is kind of all about, is getting that, uh, building up to, uh, elevation. So this is the South Pinellas Avenue furniture. And then this is the, um, rear view on the bottom, and then the view from Apricot Court. The project does meet the T-five A, uh, standards with respect to the building placement form, uh, function, obviously, parking and landscaping. The only item it does not meet is what's called, um, clear glazing for the frontage. Your transect code calls for, uh, seventy percent on like a shop front or storefront. It wants people to be able to have a, a window or, or, um, you know, kind of not a solid wall as they walk by. We are suggesting that this standard be, um, uh, allowed to, um, be waived or reduced, uh, based on the fact that, um, a good portion of that front is really above eye level because of the elevation of the building. If you look to the left there on the building frontage, that's where the tanks are being stored. That area does meet the seventy percent, uh, window storefront type of, uh, standard. But the other part doesn't quite meet it, but, um, staff feels that it, it, it still meets the intent of the code as far as the design. So staff is recommending approval of the site plan, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. I won't read those unless you'd like them read, uh, into the record. And we would also like, uh, the board to confirm approval of the warrant, that is also in the resolution based on the building elevations that are proposed, um, to be less than the seventy percent glazing requirements. Are there any questions?
I, I have a question. Now, now I know the site, that, that used to be a building that had, uh, actually at one time burnt down. My concern is, when we have a super high tide, you said, tanks being stored, and I would imagine with, they would be stored with pool chemicals, um, on a very high tide, believe it or not, uh, alternate nineteen does flood. And my concern is that whatever, and I don't know if that's a condition, is that whatever takes are in there, whatever chemicals that are stored be at a point or, or contained to such that, uh, any flooding, they would be protected because of salt water erosion or corrosion of any tanks. I don't know how this, if that's been addressed or not.
That has been addressed, um, the, um, standards for flooding and also the standards for, um, fire and for any failure, the tanks themselves, um, were, uh, the fire marshal and, uh, building official were satisfied with, with those, um, standards. We, we could reiterate that, if you wish, on a condition, um.
As, as, just, just my concern, because like I said, we have, on severe high tides, the alternate nineteen does flood, it is a salt water. And, uh, just want to make sure containment of chemicals is paramount.
Okay. Yes.
Any further questions for staff?
I have a question.
John.
How, how close to the, uh, to Pinellas Avenue is the end of this building? Because it seems like it would be a, uh, a hindrance for people coming out of the Ace Hardware. And, um, if they were, is, yeah, it's, is there going to be, is there going to be a traffic visibility problem?
If you're asking how close it is, I'd have to look. There should not be a, a traffic visibility problem there, no. I mean, um, the driveway at Ace Hardware should be sufficiently, um, far enough north that your, um, clear site triangle is met.
Just seems, by the rendering, it seems like it's really close. So somebody looking, somebody looking south would have, have, maybe have an issue.
And, yeah, we, we can add that as a condition if needed, but I think that the site triangle is met on that.
Good point, setback.
Any other questions for staff?
I, I'd like to follow up, just, just, uh, based on the plan, do you know what the setback of that building is from the road?
From Alt nineteen?
Alt nineteen.
The steps are, are basically on the property line.
Okay, so, but what's, okay, I, I don't know what the.
The building itself is setback five feet. The building itself is setback five feet, if I remember right.
From, from alternate?
Yeah, from the property line.
My rendering has got the car right there, so.
Are a little deceptive.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the, no, just from the rendering, it, it looks like, again, I don't know if that's, if that's a parked car or, or a car on Pinellas Avenue, but the wall from this, obviously the stairs going up to this pitch-a-penny, that, you know, that car is right there on the wall.
The car, I'm not, oh, oh, from the, yeah.
The rendering, yeah, on the rendering, the.
Can we go back, can we reopen that? Yeah, and we would not go by the rendering, we would go, obviously by the site plan.
So if there's a five-foot setback off of the road of alternate, is that what you're saying? Or the property line? Where does the property, what's the setback from alternate to the property line?
Five feet for the building, zero for the steps.
But there is, there's a sidewalk that's, looks like, I don't know, the sidewalk looks like more than five feet.
Yeah.
If it's to scale, so that would help some.
Yeah, yeah, I think I kind of mirror Mr. Kulianus's concern is, once construction starts and you realize that you've got a bad sightline to southbound traffic, it's kind of too late in the game to, to push the building back. I don't know if there's enough space to require additional setback, just to, just, because I think your comment was, you believe that, that that's not going to be an issue with sightline, but, but at a point where construction starts and you realize, you know, oops, there is going to be a sightline problem. Would it be more prudent to look at it addition, adding some more setbacks so we can at least assure any southbound, anybody leaving that parking lot, that they have some type of sightline to oncoming traffic?
I think that's what Mr. Kulianus's kind of point was.
Yes, it does. I mean, the site is, is, is pretty tight and your transect code encourages those smaller setbacks.
Can you guys hear me? This is Renee.
Yeah, someone's going to pull out onto the sidewalk to leave the site, so they will pull beyond the property line. Yes, go ahead, Renee.
Sorry, I have one more question. Is the only sign to the store, the sign that's on the building?
The signage, that's not a part of the application tonight. So I don't know exactly what the proposed signage is. That's a rendering, but the signage would come in as a separate permit. And I believe we have Renee on the Zoom call. Renee Vincent is our planning director and she'd like to.
Hello, everybody. I'm actually across the hallway in my office, but listening. Regarding the setback from Alt 19, just looking at the, at the scale graphically, I'm going to say you've got at least 20 feet from the edge of pavement to the, to the building wall. That includes the, you know, the sidewalk and the setback from the sidewalk, so just, that's just by, looking at it graphically on the, on the screen, that's what I'm estimating.
Has someone looked at the, exactly what's going on? Is, is that actually, is just beyond the property line to the north? Is that the driveway into the parking lot or is the driveway further to the north? Do we know?
Are you talking about for the Ace Hardware?
Yes.
Ah, let me jump into my map and look. I, I have not that specific. See if I can look while we're here.
Well, in terms of addressing this, would it be suitable to, to place a condition that the, the city engineer would go back and verify that we're not creating a potential sightline problem there and that, that all the, the vision triangles are met? Since that driveway is actually off-site, it, it could have been missed possibly from, because it's not really shown on this plan, but it's definitely impacted.
Yeah, I think that's a work condition.
I would, I would phrase it staff, because we don't have a city engineer.
Okay. Does, does that address you guys?
Yeah, I, I don't know if, if, so, so Renee, what you're saying, and I just want to be clear, that you're saying there, there is at least a 20-foot buffer between alternate 19 and the front of that building? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, from like, from the edge of pavement, you know, by the time you, actually from the edge of the sidewalk back. Just looking at it graphically on my screen with the scale, it looks like it's, you know, right around 20 feet.
Okay, I, I guess I wonder if we can make that as a condition then? Because 20-foot would be, I think, appropriate as a, as a sightline. And, you know, I, at least if we have a minimum, you know, I, it's hard without, without a scale. I know you're looking at it in scale and I'm going to rely on you to say it's 20-foot. So I'm going to take you at your word that you measured a 20-foot and, and therefore, based on your, what you're, what you're looking at, so. I, I would ask, maybe we consider that as a, as a requirement, that at least the building would be at least 20-foot from the, from, from the edge of pavement?
Might I make a suggestion that instead of giving a specific setback, since there are setbacks already listed within the transect code that the property owner has a right to, that the condition be that there be a line of sight or, or, you know, sight triangle be approved based on the position of the building? And, you know, that's more of a safety concern, but the code is specific as to what setbacks are permissible as of right within it. So I don't, I don't know necessarily placing a condition on the exact setback is appropriate.
And we do have a specific standard for a sight triangle. I would, I would suggest that you refer us to that specific standard.
It, it does appear, if you look at the, if you look at the width or the depth of the building off of Alt 19, the building is basically 40 feet deep. And if you take half of that dimension and move it out to the street, it pretty much is 20 feet. I mean, it may vary a foot or so one way or the other.
I like, can I ask a question? The, and I don't know if this is a Renee or a Pat question. So the, the plan for Tarpon is, is that area, is that area, is it ideal to have retail up close to the street? Or is it more ideal to have retail setback with parking in front? It's, because it seems like from probably Walgreens north, no, yeah, Walgreens South, everything's set back, right? Winn-Dixie, you know, the, everything that's on the Ace Hardware. Is that what we want in Tarpon? Do we want to have things setback, have things on the street? Or is there a, is there a master plan that, that you guys have in your vision?
So, I think I'll answer that. So yes, the special area plan is that very extensive community involvement and through its adoption. So that entire area of South Pinellas really is, is part of a redevelopment area and is intended to redevelop in accordance with that SMART code. And so you do see the reduced setbacks with the intent to push parking to the rear. Obviously, you know, when you have these first projects, it sets up a bit of a juxtaposition with, you know, with existing, you know, parcels and, and existing development. So there's going to be growing pains along the way. I do think it's very appropriate to put, you know, a condition in place that says that, you know, the visibility triangle will be evaluated, you know, with the adjacent Ace Hardware. Those entrances and exits are somewhat, I don't want to say informal there, but they're, they're definitely, you know, they are close. So we, we do need to do that.
So this is in, this is within the vision that you have for the master plan?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, do we, do we know exactly how we're wording an additional condition to address that?
I think counsel, I think you said that there is a, or I'm sorry, Pat may have said that there is a, a requirement, and I can't remember the phraseology.
Sight, sight triangles.
Visibility triangles, what it's referred to in our code.
So visibility triangle.
There is a standard for that.
Okay, so we just want a condition that it, it comply with all requirements for sight triangles, even though that drive is not on the property?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, does the developer owner have a presentation?
He may be joining by Zoom, sorry. We should ask if the applicant is available by Zoom.
We do have raised hands in Zoom?
Pat, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Jim Ish, president, CEO of Sepco Corporation. I just want to let you know I'm here. I don't know if my civil is on the phone or here. So I just want to let you know I am on the Zoom and can answer any questions that's non-technical.
And bringing in Mr. Catalano. See if he can connect in. He's attempting to join his audio at this point. And unfortunately, I think we may have lost him at this point.
All right, does, well, does anyone have questions for the owner?
Are you going to be the, are you the owner of the building or, and also the franchisee for the pinch-a-penny?
We are the owner of the building. The franchisee is owned by a local, local couple.
All right, if there's no further questions for the owner, is there any public comment? Seeing no public present, do we have any emails or letters?
No.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve application number 20-120 with the additional condition and with the sightline or what did you call it again, the?
The visibility triangle.
Yeah, the visibility triangle requirement added as a condition. In addition to the condition set forth in the, in the city's recommendation.
You also want the condition about the chemicals, right?
Yes, oh, thank you for pointing that out. Yes, with the condition of, of, of the safety protocols for, for whatever chemicals that are being stored on the premises.
And, and just as a clarification, whatever the safety protocols are?
The fire department or, and or the.
Okay, whoever, whoever the governing body is to that, okay.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion. Did, did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes.
Mr. Kulianos?
No.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to item number six, application number 20-135, future land use map amendment and rezoning for 8.61 acres located in Anclot Isles subdivision from the future land use map designation, commercial recreation to residential low and from zoning designation waterfront development WD-1 district to residential planned development RPD district. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes. This is the Anclot Isles subdivision and your agenda had the, original agenda in the packet, excuse me, had the incorrect application number. It's actually application 2135. Anclot Isles is located up north of the Anclot River, off of the Anclot Road. Once you pass Anclot Isles Marina, you will see Marina Drive. And that leads out to Anclot Isles, which is, or Isle, maybe that's how you say it, which is a 19-unit. No, misaligned, there it goes, 19-unit, single-family detached residential subdivision. Just taken a long time to flip. This just shows an aerial with the plat over top and these are, are 19 substantial homes. The property was platted in 1995 and is completely, the subdivision is completely built out. So what you have before you is a subdivision built on property that has been under the commercial recreation future land use and the waterfront development zoning since, before the code was adopted, before 1990 for sure. The area was then, I believe the marina. for sure. The area was then, I believe the Marina and the island were under a, a common owner and there was some sort of a project going and the subdivision was, was kind of split off as a standalone, single-family subdivision that was developed. But unfortunately, at that time, the future land use and the zoning were not changed to align with the land use that was being approved. So the idea with this, with these changes is to align what's out there and what we project to be out there into the planning horizon with, with the correct future land use designation, which we're proposing as residential low and a residential planned development zoning district. This shows a future land use map. The areas is pretty much has residential around it to the southeast. There, there are, there's an industrial future land use. Pretty much what you've got along this area, the river is marinas and residential. But the site, as you can see, is pretty well buffered from any industrial activity because of the river and the tributaries there. So the zoning, again, around the site or north of the site is residential. That's in the unincorporated county. And then you still have the waterfront development covering the marinas for the zoning. This proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and with the countywide plan. There will need to be a change to the countywide map. They have it designated as resort, again, a holdover from the previous future land use, I mean, the existing future land use map, but previous to the plating of the property. This proposal does meet the rezoning criteria. I would say overall, it meets the, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's already served by facilities. So facility capacity and service are existing. They're not expected to be increased with this proposal. I will also say that the uses in the residential planned development district, those are outlined in your staff report. They pretty much are very close to the single-family districts, the R100, R100A. This application is, the applicant is the city of Tarpin Springs. It was initiated by a majority of the homeowners there in the subdivision. Our code allows the petitioning of the Board of Commissioners by a group of property owners to have something rezoned or redesignated on the future land use map. That's what this homeowners, group of homeowners did. And the board would then initiate the amendment. And that's what you have before you, the city initiating that amendment. So staff is recommending approval of the future land use map change from commercial recreation to residential low and approval of the amendment to the zoning map from waterfront development to residential planned development. Are there any questions?
Pat, this was, this was to clean up when we had that issue with tourist homes in that area and realize that this property was, should have been rezoned some time ago. And that's what this is, is to clean that up, if I remember correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Well, yeah, when you say clean up, does that mean that vacation homes will not be allowed there?
The residential planned development zoning uses do not include what's called a tourist home, which would be a vacation rental. So under the city's code, they would not be allowed at all.
Any further questions for staff? All right. Do, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, do we have any letters or emails?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we don't.
All right.
And I would like to go ahead and make a motion on application 20-135 that we approve the future land use plan amendment and rezoning.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Who seconded that?
I did.
Mr. Morgan? Okay, thank you. Mr. Andriotis?
Yes, approve.
Mr. Kuliannis?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudas?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to item number seven, application numbers 2106, 2107, and 2123, all pertaining to the 72.62 acres of property located at 42501 US Highway 19 North. 2106 and 2107 are preliminary planned development and rezoning from general business zoning districts to residential planned development zoning district to allow for the construction of a 404-unit residential apartment development. And 20-123 is a conditional use to allow establishment of a residential use in the commercial general future land use map category. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. This is the Anclot Harbor project. And what you have before you is a request for preliminary planned development approval and rezoning and a request for a conditional use in the commercial general future land use to allow residential use on the property. The property ownership is over 72 acres, about eight and a half acres or so of that is submerged land. So you've got a proposed development on about 64 acres of land rezoning to RPD and again, the conditional use to allow residential. This is located on the east side of US 19 between the river, Anclot River and the Pinellas Trail. This shows, it's kind of hard to read up there, but this shows some of the context of the area. The property is obviously is vacant. It is on the east side surrounded pretty much by residential uses. Mobile homes to the south, single family to the east. To the north, across the river, you've got the St. Luke's Eye Center. And again, some commercial and some apartments up that way. And across 19, again, you've got some vacant single-family, mobile home and that sort of thing. Those areas include both properties that are in the city and in the unincorporated county. So this shows the future land use map, future land use on the properties, commercial general and residential office general. And surrounding the properties is, is really the bulk of it is residential. And then the zoning on the property is general business for the entire property. This gives a project overview of 404 multifamily units in five buildings. This is again, a 64-acre site with approximately 42 acres of uplands. There will be no change to the future land use designations that are on the property. Another look at the layout. Basically, some of the things, I guess, to highlight would be, and, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, the applicant does have a presentation and I'm sure we'll get into questions. But this site is proposed with a single access of, and the access detail is there, of actually three lanes, which is, with, with a gated entrance and the gate is set back fairly substantially from US 19. So it's got that. Again, it proposes these units in five buildings. It proposes a clubhouse with amenities, pool, fitness center, that sort of recreational items, plus some, some working space for collaboration in, in work area. It's got several recreational amenities proposed for the site, including preservation of one of the areas of pine winds there to the southeast where a nature trail will be established. So that's kind of some of the main features of the site. In addition to the buildings, you have the parking and some parking garages. This is just a conceptual rendering of the elevation of the site, elevations of the buildings. This is a summary schematic of the project amenities, again, with the recreational pedestrian circulation system throughout the site and the clubhouse amenities. The applicant also proposes to designate, donate an area to the, to the northwest along the river and donate that to the city as a park property.
When you say area, how much of an area?
I believe, and the applicant can confirm, I think it's just under two acres of land. And that would be a pedestrian bicycle access only type and course access from the water. This is the landscape plan and I've gone ahead and put the details of that in the slideshow so you can see where the landscaping is proposed. The landscaping is, does exceed our code requirements and of course, some of that is going to include the mitigation for tree removal as part of their tree mitigation plan. And this is the list of species, all Florida native or Florida-friendly species that are going on the site. So you have really kind of three criteria standards that you're looking at or three, three items you're looking at standards for. So I've kind of tried to, to summarize some of these items that are repetitive. So for example, for the preliminary planned development, the rezoning and the conditional use, they all have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The applicant has presented significant narrative evidence of that. And there's a little bit more in the staff report. So that has been provided. Public facility capacities are sufficient to serve this project as outlined in your staff report, which is a fairly lengthy report. Transportation infrastructure will be needed to accommodate the, the traffic configuration and circulation onto US 19. And wastewater infrastructure will need to be installed to serve the site. Those will both be done by the developer. Basically, the environmental criteria are met. In this case, our wetlands and significant uplands criteria. And part of that is accomplished by clustering, the design into the five buildings, reducing the density below the maximum allowable, which is some, in your staff report, I believe it's 485 units are allowable on the site. They're going for 404 units. And they're also providing the open space recreational amenities and some sustainable site features. As far as compatibility and the effect on adjacent properties, that speaks to your rezoning and conditional use criteria. Again, this is mostly surrounded by residential. It provides a pretty good transition. There's single family to the east, lateral mobile home to the south. So apartments and especially given the location on US 19, provides a pretty good transition on, as far as density and use. And again, the site is buffered from adjacent lands by the Anclot River and really by 19 from across, from the west. The commercial general future land use map category wants you to, the, the primary use, I'm sorry, the secondary uses in that category include residential. So it calls for a conditional use review of the residential. And really, I think that's, that's pretty much to ensure there are no conflicts. If you were going to put, you know, 400 units next to Tarpin Mall or next to some industrial or something on 19, it, it's looking for you to not set up conflicts. The applicant is leaving the commercial general in place. There's really no reason to change it and the residential use is allowed. We believe that because the area is mostly residential and buffered, that you're really not setting up any potential conflicts with respect to land use. The applicant has requested two waivers. One is a waiver to the height limit, which is 45 feet in the residential planned development district. The applicant is asking for 53 feet in order to cluster those units and keep it to five buildings. And we believe because of the location right up on, right there on 19 and the substantial open space and river buffers, that the height can be compatible, visually compatible with the area. And there's also a waiver, I've got a typo there. I've got a four-lane entrance, but it's a three-lane entrance with a medium to allow only one vehicular access to the site. And the design of it has been modified through TRC comments to the point where the, the technical staff is, is happy with that access design. So staff is supporting both of those waivers. So staff is recommending approval of the ordinance for preliminary planned development and rezoning with the waivers for the height and a single project access point. We have 19 conditions listed and I won't go over all those or read them unless you want me to, read them into the record. I will say, if you've had a chance and for any member of the public, I did leave copies of the staff report at the back of the room. Most of those are items that will be required for the final planned development. So the applicant has a lot of work to do. When you read that list, you will see all that detail will come in with the final planned development. The applicant will also be, while there are some preservation, future land use areas designated on the site, those will be revised to match the actual jurisdictional wetlands that are out there. So they need to be adjusted. So there will be some preservation, future land use on the site. The upland area that's being preserved for the, the nature trail will also be designated as recreation open space. So that is another condition that's on your list. Most of the rest of them speak to items that will be, need, need to come in on the final development plan. Staff is also recommending approval of the conditional use, allowing the residential in the commercial general category by resolution 202072. There was one comment received and public comment while this project was going through TRC. That is in your packet. It was mostly, mostly kind of a list of suggestions and questions from one citizen. With that, I could take questions or you could hear the applicant's presentation. With that, I could take questions or you could hear the applicant's presentation however you want to proceed.
Anyone have questions for staff?
I have, I have a few questions. Or, well, maybe it should probably be appropriate for the applicant to address the questions that I have. But this probably is one for city staff. You, you're asking for us to waive the height requirements because they're looking at a smaller footprint on the property?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have, as far as the fire department, have you checked with the fire department to see if they have the adequate equipment to reach that height?
Yes, we do.
Question on the, on the little park area that they're going to donate. Is the city going to be willing to take responsibility for maintaining that? Or is the developer going to maintain that along with their, their grounds maintenance?
Those details would be worked out. Obviously, the board of commissioners would have to accept this donation. The way I see it playing out, and there is a condition number 14 that talks about that park donation. The applicant would be donating that land, assisting the city with some type of assistance to put some probably minimal improvements. It's, it's kind of meant to be intended at this point anyway to be a passive type park, maybe a kayak pullout or something like that. And yes, I believe the city would, would be maintaining that, but I would not be able to speak for the final arrangements between the applicant and the city. That would be up to the board.
Pat?
Yes?
That, the park area, the access is only by water, right? Because it's a gated community, so the public can't.
Yes, by water or from the sidewalk on US 19. So pedestrian, bicycle and water, probably non-motorized.
I have another question.
Boats.
Is, obviously that's going to require with 400 units, I would suspect you're going to have, what, 800 to 1,000 cars in a subdivision or in a, in a development that large? Is, obviously there's going to be another light there, correct?
No.
You don't think it would require a traffic light?
The applicant has submitted a traffic study and I believe there are some members of the applicant's team who can speak to the traffic. And they have coordinated, had preliminary coordination with Department of Transportation. What they will have is a write-in, write-out with U-turns north and south. The DOT at this point will not warrant a light at that location.
I do have a follow-up, if I may.
You mentioned that part of the property was in Tarpon Springs and part of it was in the county, is that correct?
No, I'm sorry, when I was showing you the surrounding area that surrounds the property, yes, some of that, some of those properties are unincorporated and some are in the city limits, yes.
I do have a follow-up, if I may. Yeah, I was looking at some of the comments with, I guess, TRC response.
Perfect, look.
I'm sorry, the TRC response to item 12 said it does not address a conservation of the uplands proposed for the preservation. And I guess that's something that either conservation designation or a preservation designation via future land use plan, map, I mean. So why can't we address, because that's, that's a highly, you know, one of the issues that they, we've always had with this property is the conservation, it's right along the Anclot River. Is there a reason why there can't be a comprehensive conservation plan moving forward? Or do, why would we, why would we have to wait at a future date to determine that?
The way that comment was resolved, the wetlands would be put into a preservation future land use designation or, well, some of them already are, but that'll be adjusted to match.
I'm a layperson, so what does that mean to me?
That means that the, the future land use designation under preservation will basically very much limit what can be done. It will preserve the wetlands in their undisturbed state other than maintaining them free of invasive exotic vegetation and those sorts of things. The uplands, the, what was done with that was to propose a future land use map designation of recreation open space rather than preservation. That also basically removes any potential for residential density in that area. So that's what that change does. But at the same time, it allows the applicant to maintain a hiking trail, that sort of recreational amenity in that area that's consistent with that, with that future land use. And I do have that future land use per category described in the staff report. So we can go over that if you wish. So that's how that comment was resolved.
So once, once this is built out, is the plans we, we see here or the, the final version of them, there would be no opportunity for any further density or construction of anything but, but some amenities in the preservation or the recreation areas.
As proposed, yes, that's, that's the proposal.
The species that are, there's eagle. And are there, what are the other species that are possibly impacted by, by this?
The other listed species, and the applicant can correct me if I, if I don't touch on them, that they have to address would be the gopher tortoises and indigo snakes technically because this is, it's, because of the presence of gopher tortoises, they, I believe, I might have gotten that wrong, but I believe they have to assume there could be indigo snakes and they have to do an indigo snake management plan. So you've, they've got to do plans for all of them, for those three at least, there may be more, but the applicant can confirm that.
Well, if we don't have any further questions for the moment, why don't we let the applicant make their presentation because hopefully they'll either answer or bring up a whole lot more questions.
Very good. Thank you and good evening. I'm Ed Armstrong. I'm an attorney with a law firm of Hillward Henderson.
Can you take your mask off while you talk? It's hard to hear.
Sure. I was wondering how that was going to work. Thank you. I'm Ed Armstrong. I'm an attorney with a law firm of Hillward Henderson. We are located at 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800 in Clearwater. I represent the Morgan Group, which is the applicant tonight. The Morgan Group is exclusively a multifamily, which means apartment developer. And over the course of their history, they have built over 20,000 apartments at total construction cost of over $3 billion. They know exactly what they're doing in terms of developing a site like this, which certainly does have some complexities, some of which have been touched upon in the questions that have just come to us from the board. There are three agenda items for you tonight, that's as explained by Ms. McNeese. And that's the preliminary development plan with two waivers, a rezoning and a conditional use. And with the permission of the board, we'd like to present our case in its entirety that would be applicable to all three applications as opposed to breaking down one at a time if that is acceptable to the board.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. We do have a very inclusive presentation. This is a complex site. We're anticipating a number of questions from the board and we've tried to anticipate as best we could and build the, the answers into our presentation. So if we can wait till the end, you're always very good about that. I hopefully will answer most of your questions during the course of our presentation. In order to obtain your approval tonight, this is a quasi judicial hearing, we have to carry our burden of meeting the criteria. Allow those criteria are planning related. Our planning expert is Ms. Cindy Terrapini, who will be speaking momentarily. After she speaks, we don't have any other formal presentation. That said, we do have several subject matter experts on the development team that are here tonight that can respond to some of the specific questions that you might well have and we believe that we'll be able to answer appropriately. So thank you very much. With that, I'm going to ask Ms. Terrapini to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. I'm Cindy Terrapini. My business address is 128 East Tarpon Avenue, Tarpon Avenue in Tarpon Springs, Florida. And along with Mr. Armstrong and the rest of our team, we represent Morgan Group, who is the applicant tonight. And now we'll go back to some of your questions that you had earlier, but I did want to talk about the project a little bit and how we first envisioned the project and how Morgan envisioned that. From the very beginning of the conceptual design of the project, the applicant and all of its consultants have been very mindful of the unique nature of this site and especially its environmental characteristics. These unique environmental features have been the driving force behind all aspects of the design of the project. And I'd like to focus first in my presentation about those environmental features. First, the Anclot River, Anclot Harbor site is adjacent to the Anclot River, as you well know, and it's the largest vacant site in Tarpon Springs and probably one of the largest sites in North County. The site has over 1,900 lineal feet of frontage on the Anclot River. In recognition of this outstanding Florida waterway, the residential buildings and parking are substantially set back from the Anclot River. The closest building, and I'll show you in a moment on the site plan, the closest building is 175 feet from the shoreline. The other four buildings are in the range of 350 to 400 feet from the shoreline. We think that designing this project in this manner recognizes the value of the river both for its environmental features and value as well as a great amenity for the residents. Secondly, with regard to wetlands, the Anclot Harbor site is a total of 72 acres, about 42 acres are uplands and developable. That leaves about 30 acres which are wetlands and submerged land that cannot be developed. Majority of the wetlands are located surrounding the two peninsulas in the southern portion of the site. And there's an additional small wetland along the, the Anclot River in the northwest corner of the site. We believe that these wetlands add to the natural ambiance of the site and the project. Morgan Group proposes to maintain and preserve 97% of the wetlands on the site. There's only one small wetland impact of less than an acre, and I'll show you in a moment on that site plan, but it's right around building two. And if those wetlands were to remain, they really inhibit an effective and efficient design for both the buildings and the parking area. The mitigation required for this very small impact will be accomplished onsite, not in a mitigation bank, but again, onsite. The site contains two eagles nests and I'll point those out in a moment, between the stormwater pond and the Anclot River and kind of the center of that area. The project proposes the gold standard of treatment for these eagle nests. First of all, within 100 feet of the eagle's nest, there is no improvements proposed at all. Within 330 feet radius of the nest, the only improvements would be a portion of the stormwater pond. Obviously, that's at grade. Within the 660 feet radius of the nest, the only improvement would be the balance of the pond and some at-grade parking. We all recognize and the applicant recognizes that work to build the pond and the parking in the 660 feet will have to be done outside of the nesting season, which is October to May. Excuse me. So this exhibit you saw just a moment ago with the staff as well, just giving you a general location of the map on the north end of the city, fronts on the Anclot River along the north boundary, and you can see in the aerial. And this is the illustrated site plan and it's a little easier to see some of the features of the site. The, there are five buildings, four right in here, and this is the fifth one along here. The clubhouse is located and pool is located in this area. The proposed area for this park to be donated to the city is in that northwest corner. This is, of course, one of the stormwater, the large stormwater pond. The eagle, two needle nests are right in this area. The project proposes a boat dock, subject to permitting, of course, and a kayak launch and a second kayak and canoe launch in this area. What I was speaking about here, these are the wetlands that surround these two peninsulas. The western peninsula, the southwest peninsula will be constructed with one apartment building. The eastern peninsula will remain undeveloped except for a nature trail and associated improvements related to that trail. What I believe it was Mr. Kascudis was asking about, or perhaps Mr. Colianis, was the, the wetland protection and what we're talking about now is the preservation plan category is currently on, whoops, went back, wrong way. The preservation plan category is currently on most of the wetlands today, of course, again, in this area and then a little wetland up in this area. That, we have also received approval from SWF MUD for our wetland jurisdictional line and what Ms. McNeese was speaking of is that the, the preservation plan category will be adjusted to be co-terminous, to be the same boundary as what that jurisdictional line is with SWF MUD. So all of the wetlands on the site, except for the small one acre area, which is, there's two wetlands actually that make up the one acre. One is right in here, one is right in here. Those two would not be protected, but all the rest of the wetlands, some 30 acres, would be protected with the preservation plan category in addition to being governed by this site plan. The other protection that Ms. McNeese was speaking of was to protect, and I believe the chairman was speaking of this, there are, there is an area of at least, I think where it's 10 or 12 acres or so of upland area, which is not proposed for the development, and that is in this area. That's the southeast peninsula and a little piece of property right on our eastern border. There are uplands in that area. It is potentially developable without this amendment, but we are proposing to place the, the recreation open space plan category on those two areas. So the only thing that can be done in that area is, again, recreation open space, which would be aligned, of course, with the proposed trail in that area. The third item I want to talk about in just a little bit more detail and give you a graphic of that is the eagle nest protection. So the two red circles, that's the 100-foot radius from the eagle's nest. So you can see, here's the stormwater pond we were just looking at. Here's the four main buildings and the fifth is on the peninsula to the south. This is the very edge of the property and 19 is just a little bit over here to the west. So within the 100 feet, again, no improvements whatsoever. Within 330, only the retention pond. And again, you can see that, that's the yellow circle. All you can see in that area that would be constructed would be a portion of the retention pond. And then the 660 is the green circles and there's two nests. That's why you're seeing two circles that are closely similar but not exact. So again, in the green area, there would be no vertical improvements. It would be the balance of the retention pond and at-grade parking, which that's what you see in this area. All, all of the buildings, including the clubhouse and including the five apartment buildings are outside of the eagle nest buffers. So I want to talk for just a minute about the waivers and perhaps I'll go back to the site plan and talk about that. Project's been designed to comply with all but two of the city's site development regulations and the additional requirements of RPD. We meet the lot size and width, the setbacks and actually exceed in many cases the setbacks, the open space, the ISR, the parking and a 50-foot wetland buffer against all of our wetlands. So the city generally has a 15-foot buffer. SWF MUD has a 25-foot buffer from wetlands. The RPD District has a 50-foot buffer and we are complying with that on all of our, all of the wetlands on the site. The RPD District is created to allow some flexibility in design so that where you have some positives, where there might be some areas that you need some waivers or some variations to some of the code, it allows you to consider those and for the board of commissioners to approve them. It has to be, those waivers has to be justified by one or more of these factors. Those factors are a superior alternative, protection of significant features, deprivation of reasonable use, or technically impractical. So what the waiver, the requested waiver has to meet at least one of those. So what the waiver, the requested waiver has to meet at least one of those. Due to the unique nature of this site, we're requesting two waivers. One for the height and the second for the lack of a secondary entrance. Both of these waivers comply with two of the criteria, and I'd like to tell you a little bit more about those. The first waiver, as the staff described, is to increase the height from forty-five feet to fifty-three feet. And the reason primarily that we're doing this is, is with the ability to have basically an extra floor, just about, it allows us to only have five buildings and to cluster those buildings in the center of the site. It reduces the number of buildings. It reduces the size of the buildings, the footprint of the buildings on the ground. And it allows us, again, to maintain that large setback from both the eagle and from the Anclot River. So this requested height waiver meets two of the criteria. It's a superior alternative because we have fewer buildings and therefore a smaller project footprint. And secondly, it protects significant features, including the wetlands, the uplands, the river, and the eagle nest. This one is pretty clearly a great idea for the project. The second waiver is to allow only one entrance to the site along US nineteen. There's no other existing street adjacent to this property, and there's only one other right-of-way that could potentially provide access. This right-of-way is called Hayes Road. It is an unimproved right-of-way, and it comes in at the site right about in this area. It deadends into the site here, and it goes east all the way over to Jasmine. It currently doesn't provide access to any project or any site that I'm aware of. And the primary reason why we have chosen to not use that and not request to improve that is that if built, it would create new traffic that would travel from this multifamily site east on Hayes to Jasmine and intersect and impact the Sail Harbor neighborhood to the east of the project. The other reason that this right-of-way is not appropriate is that it's only forty feet in width. Fifty feet is the minimum requirement for the city for a local road, and there's no ability to gain a fifty-foot right-of-way all the way over to Jasmine. So for these reasons, we're requesting the waiver to have only one access point on US nineteen. As Ms. McNeese pointed out, the Farm Marshal has looked at that and has agreed that our proposed accessway would be compatible and would be safe just in case there is some activity right at the entrance. If there's a, an accident or an ambulance or other vehicle needs to get in, that's why there are three lanes there that will provide that alternative access. So our second waiver for only having one accessway is it's a superior alternative by avoiding traffic on the multifamily neighborhood, and it's technically impractical. Existing forty-foot right-of-way is less than the city's minimum of fifty, and there's no limited ability to increase that right-of-way. And as part of our application package, we've submitted detailed narratives describing how the three applications comply with your review criteria, and I'd like to focus on just a few of these. The rezoning, preliminary development plan, and the conditional use comply with and in many, many cases exceed the review criteria for the following reasons. The multifamily residential use is allowed in the site's two planned categories of commercial general on the west and residential office general on the east. We comply with the maximum density of fifteen units an acre, and actually, we are less than the maximum development potential that could be built on the site. The plant, the plan protects the environmental features of the site, including onsite preservation of ninety-seven percent of the existing wetlands, significant setbacks from the Anclot River, and the highest level of protection for the eagle's nest that is possible. The significant upland habitat is also preserved on the site. And again, that's in, located in two general places. One, the southeast peninsula, and then here, the section between the pond and the riverbank. The proposed project provides new multifamily residential use to promote residential diversity in the city. The project is designed as a livable community with a connected pedestrian trail, which I haven't focused on. I should talk about that a little bit. In addition to this trail, nature trail that goes through this upland area, this trail continues and meanders along the stormwater pond along here, and it connects with all five of the buildings on the site, connecting them both to the trails so they can activate and use that, as well as to the clubhouse area. The project will improve the access to the site in several ways. We will construct a new northbound right-turn lane into the community. So if you're on nineteen and you're going to the development, there will be a new northbound right-turn lane so that you can get off the main line of US nineteen and safely make a turn into the development. We also proposing new left-turn median openings to the north of the site and the south of the site that will allow folks to make, if you're, for example, if you're leaving the site here, if you're right at the entrance here and you're leaving the site, going to work or to shop, you will go north and continue north and go wherever you would like in that northern area, Home Depot, Lowe's, wherever. Actually, Home Depot to the north. But if you wanted to turn south, you would come, you would go up US nineteen, make a U-turn, and then be able to come back down. And again, same thing if site residents are approaching the project and coming home from the north, perhaps they work in Pasco County somewhere. As they come south on US nineteen, they would make a U-turn right in this area and then come back in and turn into the development. All of those improvements would be done at the developer's expense. The project does propose a transportation management plan to encourage non-vehicular modes of traffic. In other words, walking and biking through that overall circulation system we have. We also have a variety of onsite recreation facilities that we've talked about. We have electric car chargers, and we have an onsite business center that folks can use so they don't have to run out to another place to do what activities they might need to do. As Ms. McNeese explained, the developer will extend the city's sewer line to serve the site, but all other public services are available and in place to serve the project, including water, solid waste, police, fire, and stormwater management. The project proposes to donate the small park to the city, and that's in this general area right here at the northwest corner of the property. It's a one-point-eight-four acre site. The idea for this was that if you were boating, and many of you might be boaters, if you're on the Anclot River and enjoying the day, you might want to pull off and have a picnic or just have a little break. So there would be an area where you could pull off. It would not be, would not be a dock per se. It's just an area where you could pull off your boat and anchor, or if you're canoe or kayak, pull the kayak up on the bank. And the kinds of improvements we've talked to the city about, which are still yet to be confirmed, will be things very low-key like picnic bench, picnic table, things like that. So that if you wanted to get off the boat for a few minutes, have a lunch at the picnic table, that you could do so. This proposed city park would also be able to be accessed by pedestrians from the public generally. So it's a little hard to see on this map, but generally, there is, there's a sidewalk along the entire length of the property. What we're proposing as part of the site is about this area, the sidewalk is elevated. So we would propose a new sidewalk that would come along here at the lower grade to allow people to then walk up nineteen to this area. Perhaps they might come from the trail or some other reason, if they wanted to, as a pedestrian or as a bicyclist, they could access the park that way. The project, the residential project, is compatible with its surroundings. I think you could see from the aerials that there's all residential uses in this area. It's not a commercial section of US nineteen at all. And, and the only other non-residential use in the area is St. Luke's Institute, which of course is on the north bank of the river. In summary, this section of nineteen is primarily residential and neighborhood in, in, in character. And this project as a residential use would, of course, be compatible with other residential uses. Morgan Group has three applications before you tonight that we respectfully request your recommendation of approval, and they include a rezoning from General Business District to the Residential Plan Development District, a preliminary development plan for the entire site, and a conditional use for the residential use on the CG portion of the property, which is basically the west side of the property. The value of the RPD zoning district is that a specific site plan is reviewed and approved, given the city and its residents a comfort level about all aspects of the project. Additionally, the developer must submit a final development plan to the Board of Commissioners for their review and approval, which shows the detailed construction plans. And of course, that final plan must be consistent with the preliminary plan that you are reviewing tonight. We have reviewed and are in agreement with the proposed conditions in the staff report that are shown on pages one, two, and three of your staff report. With one small footnote, condition number fourteen deals with the park donation. And the developer would prefer to donate funds to the city for the construction of those improvements rather than build those improvements himself, so that we would ask for your consideration on that. And, and of course, that would be subject to the City Commission accepting this park donation. I'm going to stop there. I know there's a lot of information about this project, and we're happy to answer any and all questions that you have. Thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. And if I can't answer it, one of the rest of our team could do that. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions. The, what is the maximum density of the development?
The maximum density that could be, could be built on the property is four hundred and eighty-five units. We're proposing four hundred and four, so there'd be eighty-one units that will not be built.
Okay, how, how many units per acre for the, on the developable portion of the property, I guess?
You mean what is allowed, Mr. Chairman? Yes, it's fifteen units an acre is allowed for the upland portion and one unit per acre for the wetlands.
Also have questions?
I do. The, the retention area, is it low now or is that something you're going to have to, to construct? The, the retention area that you show, the retention pond or the ponding area?
There, there, it will be excavated.
Okay. And as far as parking, how many acres does the parking lot, or how many parking spaces do you believe that the property is going to hold?
Well, we, we meet the parking requirements. We have two, one-point-seven-five spaces for all the residents. We also have parking required for the clubhouse and the pool. We will have a total of seven hundred and sixty-one spaces on the site.
And I, it's, it's hard for me to see, but is that landscaping within the parking footprint?
Of course, the city does require, does require that, and we would comply with that, yes, sir.
Is that trees or bushes or?
It's required to have trees and shrubs and ground cover, yes, sir.
And is, as Mr. Colianis had said earlier, is there any, I guess, future request to put a traffic light out there in a crosscut through nineteen? Or do you know that?
I, I do know that. I did, our traffic engineer is here, so if you want to ask him more detail. But basically, they have had several conversations, actually had a pre-app meeting, pre-application meeting with FDOT because obviously the access to the property will have to be approved by DOT. The, the number of trips that the new project will generate is not likely to warrant a traffic light. Additionally, it's probably too close to the Lowe's traffic light to the south, so I think it's pretty unlikely there, there'd be a traffic light there.
How many trips per day is anticipated?
I can tell you the trips, everything the city's requirements now do and everybody that, they calculate on that peak hour. So the AM and the PM peak, if you just give me one second, I'll get to those numbers for you. Sorry, got too many pieces of paper here. So the AM peak is one, one hundred and forty-six trips and the PM peak is one hundred and seventy-eight trips. That's the PM, the AM and PM peak hour, that seven to nine and four to six PM.
And, and the proposed housing that you, you anticipate, is that going to require certain levels of income to reside there, or is it just going to be higher-end apartments or?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kascudis. The, the developer does propose these to be clearly market-rate apartments. The anticipated estimated range of the rents is fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred per month. They do have several different unit styles. They have one, two, and three bedrooms within the project.
When you say trips, what, explain what that means.
So a trip is one car going to or from the site.
So with nearly eight hundred cars, if, if the parking lot's full, you're only going to have that many people leaving to go to work?
Well, again, remember it's, it's peak hour. So it's, it's not the total number of trips during the day. It's just that AM peak time in the morning when people go into work and the afternoon when they're coming back. There are certainly some folks that would be able to work from home, as many of us are doing even more these days. But that is the AM and PM peak trips. And that, I certainly can have the traffic engineer speak to it, but these numbers have been reviewed and approved, and they're, they're standard trip generation numbers based on national standards.
I'm just having a hard time understanding how people leaving there can, that have to go south at peak time, are going to be able to get from that lane all the way to the left lane to then U-turn up by St. Luke's. And I could imagine the, the mess that's going to be with all those cars coming, all those cars coming south from Pasco County.
Right. I'm going to ask Christopher Hatton to come up and speak to that. I think we have an exhibit that explains that a little better. And remember, I probably didn't explain it very clearly, but the peak hours are just when you have the most trips in the morning and the most trips in the afternoon. Not everybody goes to work at nine o'clock. Some people, you know, do shift work. I mean, for a variety of reasons, some people don't go to the grocery store till three o'clock in the afternoon. So that it's a, the AM and PM are the highest level of activity of traffic.
Yeah. Well, you know how, how backed up it is right there?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Hatton. I'm a Registered Professional Engineer with Kimley Hornet Associates, six-five-five North Franklin Street, Tampa, Florida. We did conduct the transportation analysis, both with city staff's review and their transportation consultant, as well as the FDOT. One of the specific questions that I know you're specifically talking to, and if I can get to the graphic here, which shows the actual project access on US nineteen. I'll try to get the, this is the project access here. So US nineteen is this north-south. And what the DOT actually, when we met with them back in twenty nineteen, and again, we met with them just a couple of months ago to specifically talk about access to US nineteen, they recommended both time, both last year and this year, based upon their recent studies of what they call offset left-turn lanes, which means, and this kind of goes directly to your question also about there being a light. There actually really could not be a light because there is not planned for a full median opening. So what's planned right now, as Cindy had mentioned, is a northbound right-turn lane. But as she also explained, for folks to go south, you would come out here, you would basically weave across nineteen, get into U-turn, and then head south. Obviously, if you're coming from the north, heading southbound, you would pass here. You would go into a south, south to northbound U-turn and go into the, the project driveway. The main reason for that, per the FDOT, is as you know, obviously, at full median openings, this is where vehicles would come into conflict with the westbound left vehicles coming in, with the southbound lefts coming in as well. So this is a conflict that the FDOT has wanted to avoid. Now, the position that basically we're taking is certainly we want to do what's safest, and the FDOT obviously has to permit this. We have to permit it through the FDOT. One of the items that you mentioned is how can folks get from the site across three lanes into this lane to do a U-turn? So one of the things we did, and we talked to the FDOT about this, we did a gap study. And gaps are what? Available gaps in traffic that would allow a vehicle to travel from this, basically, the, the, the single driveway that we have here, across the three lanes, and to be able to get into this lane to make that northbound to southbound U-turn. So we basically, we went out and did two traffic counts, and we did calibrate them for what we call COVID conditions. So we looked at previous counts in twenty nineteen, conducted counts in twenty twenty. We basically calibrated them for the reduction that we're seeing because of the reduction in traffic counts. And then we conducted a gap study. And what you will see here, for instance, and this, as Cindy mentioned, was done for the AM and the PM peak hour when the, the traffic is heaviest. In the, in the morning, the seven to eight AM period is the highest for US nineteen. This is traveling northbound and for four, four to five PM in the PM peak hour. What we have in the blue area is the number of available gaps. So for that one hour of basically five seconds or greater, and that's basically the time when a vehicle would be exiting the driveway, basically need one, two, three, four, five. That five-second or more gap, they would need to be able to get out into nineteen, accelerate, and then to get into the U-turn lane. Basically, over that time period, there's a little bit over two hundred gaps. And what is needed from our project is a little over a hundred, and that's the exiting. Going back to that, the number of trips that you were talking about, the number of trips, basically, we're looking at is the one, in this case, the exiting ones that would basically be leaving the traffic or leaving the driveway headed north and getting into the U-turn. So basically, we've got about two hundred, a little over two hundred available gaps, and we've got a little bit more than a hundred needed for our drive, for our patrons. During the PM peak hour, obviously, you have less leaving because you have more people basically coming. basically coming home from work. You've got about 150 available gaps, and at that point, we need only about 65. So again, in both cases, in the AM peak hour and in the PM peak hour, we have more available gaps than we do needing, basically, required gaps. Now, it's getting into the weeds a little bit, but in working with the DOT, they would wanted us to make sure that we were available, basically doing that to show the availability of gaps in the 19 network.
One of the things that Ms. Tera Panny said, that the, you'd be making improvements to the turn, so are you looking at make, making like a double left turn? Is that what you're talking about, or on both, both sides of the, on the northbound side and the southbound side?
Yes, those improvements are specifically this. This was the offset left turn lanes that the FDOT requested and then basically required that we developed. Is this, so this, obviously, as you know, would need to be, this is obviously short of Beckett or Tarpon, so the other benefit here is we're providing this turn away from adding traffic to the signal right now. And obviously, the signals, both north and south, provide some of these gaps that are out there.
When y'all say improvements, I look, what is, how do you approve a turn lane? Is only to add another turn lane, so?
It is, but in this case, it's actually to get the vehicles separate from each other as opposed to just a median opening, and being able to create what we call a safer condition, basically, than sit down to the signal.
Just for comparison purposes, can you tell us what traffic densities would likely be for, for other sorts of development that, that could occur, you know, with the commercial zoning that the, the site has now?
Okay. Thanks, Cindy has.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We compared the trip comparison versus the current zoning for general business. If you had, for commercial, it'd be 460,000 square feet of commercial could be built on the site. In addition, and that is, that would propose 252 trips as compared to the same time, the AM peak, 145 trips by the project. So 76 fewer trips for our development of residential. To compare it in the afternoon, the commercial development would generate over 1,100 trips. The residential project proposed tonight would generate 178 trips. So again, our, the residential project is 88 fewer trips than the commercial development that could be put on this under the GB zoning.
And if I may, one point I'd like to make, and I think Ms. McNeese touched upon it in her presentation, is the city hired an outside traffic consultant to review our consultant's findings, and the city's consultant concurred with those findings as well. I'll just highlight that for the board.
Are there further questions for the applicant? We have any members of the public here to speak? Do we have any communication from members of the public?
You have one email that's in your packet that was received while the project was in the, under review by the technical review committee, but we've had nothing else. We have no public comments since the project was publicly noticed.
We do have a raised hand in Zoom, sir.
Could we hear from that person then?
Good evening. How are y'all? It may be my notice that's already in your packet. This is Julie Wade, 1095 Main Sail Drive. I wanted to thank Ms. Tera Panny and Mr. Anderson. Y'all were very responsive regarding the Klosterman Distant Project, and I appreciated that. And I've looked through, it's, what is it, 800 pages that were previously submitted, and I think it's generally good use of the site with many amenities. It's an already disturbed and problematic site. From the code board perspective, we've had several issues there. And I appreciate your study of the eagles. I'm not even sure they live there anymore. And the tortoise relocation. I have a few points. I really am concerned about the traffic, and I have read all the studies, but U-turns are problematic, and there are no buses that travel that, traverse that area. And I wanted to make sure that car lights entering or exiting aren't going to shine onto 19. I couldn't quite get the elevation straight as I looked at that. I would hope that the developer might improve on the exterior of the building somewhat. They're quite generic. They could be anywhere in the United States. There's nothing that says Florida or Tarpon Springs about them. That can certainly be addressed later, but I'd love to see a little sparkle on the exterior. What do the garages look like? Are they garages or are they carports? I couldn't find any drawing of those. Is there an art contribution being made? Is there any contribution to public housing? Because these are certainly not available economically to a number of people. I appreciate the preservation area. Creates a good buffer to the other housing, but as you guys have pointed out, the maintenance of that area is important. If it's just left, it's not going to stay where it's usable very long. And I'm not sure if Swift Mud's going to allow that little park. It's a great idea, but I know what trouble the city had putting in the kayak launch before, and people aren't going to be very comfortable going into a gated complex as a walker or a biker to use it. But it's, it sounds like a nice idea. And I wanted to know if there were any chances for permeable surfaces throughout the project. The lighting plan looked like you had addressed some of my usual lighting questions, but just some things to keep in mind. And again, thank you. It looks like y'all have really addressed a lot of things quite thoroughly. Appreciate it.
Are there any other public comments?
We do not have any raised hands in Zoom, sir.
You know, I do have a, could I go back? I do have a question that this, the person did bring up. With regard, and maybe somebody can answer it, with regard to like the Eagles Nest that are there, you know, you talk about lumens, which is the lighting criteria, you know, for parking, and I just don't know how that would impact, or does anybody have a study on how that impacts Eagles Nest or something like that, that have lighting at night and how that affects the wildlife, especially eagles? Because you do have two Eagles Nest there.
Thank you, Mr. Kuskudus. I don't know about a study, but what I do know is that the lighting fixtures have to be, you know, contain, yeah, the city's requirements contain the light on the site, and I'm sure that the lighting issues will be looked at when we go through the permitting process for the eagle nest, for the eagle impacts.
All right. I just wanted to also thank the, the person who spoke, because she pointed out a few things that I thought were, were insightful, so. That was my question.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. And part of my motion, you know, I've lived in Tarpon Springs most of my life, and, you know, it's been a, it's always been a small, quaint community, and sometimes it's tough to watch it grow. But unfortunately, those are the times that we live in, and I think a lot of people know the secret of Tarpon Springs and kind of want to live here. And so, in any event, we can't, as much as we hope to, to keep this a sleepy little town, unfortunately, sometimes we just can't do it. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Can I interrupt just one moment? Because there are three different.
I was going to, I was going to name all three, if you want to go one at a time.
We do them individually?
That's fine.
Thank you. Right, we can do the, right, just as the staff recommendations are listed, you can do.
Individually, or do?
You can do 21-106 and 20-107, which is one ordinance, 2020-34 is one motion, and then 20-123, which is Resolution 2020-72, as a separate motion.
You got it. All right. So I make a motion to approve 20-106 and 20-107.
Do we have a?
With, with, with the, with the conditions as provided for by the city.
And the waivers as well?
Pardon?
And the waivers as well?
And the waivers as well.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes.
Mr. Coolianos?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. Then we need a motion on 20-123.
I will go ahead and make a motion as to 20-123 to accept or to approve the conditional use subject to staff recommendations.
And I'll go ahead and second it.
Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes.
Mr. Coolianos?
No.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudus?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to item number eight, staff comments. Does the staff have comments?
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Brings us to number nine, board comments. Do any of the board members have comments?
I just kind of like say what I said before. You know, you sit here, you're looking at, you know, watching the changes to the city. Some of them, you know, it's hard, it's hard to accept, but, you know, it is what it is. And I just.
And, yeah, and on the subject of that item, it, it appears to be less harmful than many other things that could be built there, so. All right. Well, I think that brings us to item number 10, adjournment, and we stand adjourned.